Hello, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is August 9th, 2023. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building is also being offered in the live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the Township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could summarize any public comment received?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we received three public comments. All three were regarding the proposed plastic bag ordinance. One comment was in favor of the ordinance and two were opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment. Silent reflection, honor the servicemen and women placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes. The previous meeting is written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
Take that motion.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote. We are, we have six commissioners with us this evening. Commissioner Stanish will not be with us. I would also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its August 7th, 2023 workshop meeting to receive an update on four litigation matters and to discuss the possible acquisition of real estate. At this time, I would like to invite Mark Whisington to the front of the room to be joined by Commissioner Wilson. And Commissioner Wilson, we would ask that you read into the record Resolution 1616, a resolution honoring Mark Whisington for his 34 years of service as a Springfield Township police officer.
Okay. This is Resolution 1616 honoring Mark Whisington for a career of service to Springfield Township Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Mark Whisington graduated from the University of Arizona in 1987 with a bachelor's degree in public administration with a concentration in criminal justice. And whereas on February 13th, 1989, Mark Whisington was hired as the Springfield Township Police Officer. And whereas on May 26th, 1989, Mark Whisington graduated from the Pennsylvania State Police Academy Southeast Training Center in Worcester, Pennsylvania. And whereas throughout his career with the Springfield Police Department, Officer Whisington enrolled in many training courses, including, but not limited to, first aid, CPR, recertification, active shooter training, anti-bias training, opioid overdose training, equine de-escalation training, gas and electrical emergency response training. And whereas Officer Whisington received numerous letters and memoria of commendation from the Springfield Township Chief of Police and neighboring police departments. And whereas Officer Whisington was recognized by people he protected and served by receiving 32 letters of appreciation from the township from residents of Springfield Township during his illustrious career. And whereas, therefore, I therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township does hereby recognize, commend, and wholeheartedly thank Officer Mark Whisington for 34 years of dedicated service to Springfield Township community and also extends well wishes to Mark, his wife Denise, and who also retired police, township police officer, and their son Brandon. Unanimat-- well, that's my resolution.
Okay, we have a resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Okay, unanimously adopted this 19th day of August, 2023, Board of Commissioner, Springfield Township, James Lee, resident. So congratulations.
Craig, get one under the seal as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
The real photo.
For the press.
Okay, great. Come shake your hand. Come on, Lee.
I can't reach.
Congratulations.
He's pretty big. I think you probably can.
Congratulations, Mark. I'd also like to just recognize Mark's wife Denise, who's with us. As Peter mentioned, 26 years, 28 years retired from Springfield Township Police in 2016. And she was the police officer in the department and first female detective. Thank you. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. The conclusion of the committee reports, public comments, will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. If you come to the microphone, please start with your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. Christine Hesser, Orliman Avenue in Orland. On Monday night's meeting, Mike brought up that the DEP found high levels of benzene in well number six at 1725 Walnut. Can we talk about that? Can you, have the other wells, were the other wells tested? And if they were, was, was there also a high level?
Mike, yeah, I can answer that question. It was not the DEP that found it. It was the township was doing the water sampling as part of the Act Two process. There had been higher levels of concentration in that particular well in the past. And as part of the Act Two process, the DEP asked us to consider additional testing, which is what we accomplished. There was a trend upward from the last sampling event in 2020. We subsequently met with the environmental engineers and environmental council to try and figure out what we can do going forward. The decision was we were going to do another round of sampling of that particular well and a couple of the adjacent wells. The good news is there is no indication that any of the other wells have increased. This particular well is the only one. It's also near some of the soil that was imported into the site from the school district fields. We believe that's clean. It had been tested when it came over, but we're going to do some additional soil sampling to see if we can't come up with a reason why we're getting those increased levels at this point. But for right now, to explain, would, it would just be speculation.
Could we, could we have the wells near the residents' homes tested?
So the, the path of migration for the groundwater is away from the residential properties. So they don't think that that's necessary. And all of the homes over there are on domestic water, although one of the properties does have a well in the basement. Yeah, but it's not potable water for drinking purposes.
I think some of our concern is some of this with, with the change have had water in our basements and it's seeping through some of the foundations. So I think there's some concern there. Is that something we can set up for you to communicate with us? You know, maybe a confirmation of how the migration is taking place, where it's coming from, where it's going? Is it going into the stream along the tracks? Is it, is it a problem?
No, it's in the, in the below ground aquifer. It's not, it's not surface level.
When was the last time that the wells adjacent or closest to the residences were tested?
2020, I believe.
What is the cost to test?
It's not inexpensive. I mean, I can get pricing for it, but.
I, I think, I think it might be worthwhile giving those numbers.
I, I think you'd have to have your environmental engineer be your guide on that issue, whether that's a good idea or a bad idea.
I mean, I don't think there's any harm to do it. I mean, to this point, the, that is the only well that has ever had a detect of benzene in it. And it's the only one that has continued to increase. None of the other wells have had any indication whatsoever of there being any benzene located, you know, identified in them.
But it must be coming from somewhere, right? So.
Yeah.
I mean, are we sure that it's migrating towards the tracks where I think it's supposed to be migrating? I mean, are we, you know, only because we do get water in our basement, only recently with this new storm systems that are coming through. So could we set up a communication with the neighbors, maybe when things like this happen so that we are at least aware? It's just a concern. It's a concern because we're pretty close to, I mean, there's a well pretty close to our back, our houses. And if that, you know, can be tested, it would, I think it would make people feel a lot better that it's being monitored. And there was also, I think there was also a discussion about, because the wells are temporary, possibly taking out the wells when the plans are put for that site. Maybe that should be put on hold. I don't know if that's still on the agenda.
That's not on anybody's radar at this point in time.
Thank you. Okay, but if there can be some more communication, maybe with that site, especially because it's benzene. You know, that's, you guys might not live right there, but we do, and it's, it's definitely a concern.
So what's the next step in timing in terms of what the state might require with this information?
So the next step is to file an Act Two closure report and remediation report. And we're not at a point where we can do that until we determine what is causing the benzene level in this particular well to increase. So the next step is going to be a proposal that you'll see probably next month to do additional water sampling and to do some soil sampling in and around that addition, that, that, that well. To see if we can identify some. It could be something that EPA left in the, in the, in the ground when they left the site. You're familiar with the fact that they used some of the sands that were on site to fill the void that was created when they took all the contaminated soils out. There could be an indication that, that there's some, something in those that we have to take out. Yeah. So I mean, we're going to do some exploratory digging and see if there's anything visible.
Somebody had mentioned Monday too about the possibility of, because we've gotten so much higher levels of water the last few years that the, you know, the baseline
Hey, I think that.
Could be shifting from when it was previously tested.
I've just seen that happen in other locations where I've been involved in, you know, Act Two.
If they're going to test more around it, I guess it would also indicate if there's any activity closer in the direction of the homes in terms of where that.
Yeah, so this, you're familiar with where monitoring well on number six is located, if I'm mistaken, right? And, and so there, and with the path of migration going towards that Vecchione property and away from the other homes, their thought was they wanted to sample from MW9, which is adjacent, and MW11, which is right to the, I'll say closer to Walnut, but in that same general area. So.
But I would just be curious where it's starting though. So if it hasn't, so if the, if the wells, I guess, further in the direction of the homes there, haven't been tested in three years, then what's the saying?
Well, it's always been there. The, the issue here is the concentration, right? Yeah. So this, this is not new news. The benzene has always been on that site. The new news is that it's in a, in a level that was higher than the last reported level. So that's.
Yeah, and they're talking parts per billion.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is deep.
Yeah, but you guys don't live there. We do, and we get water in our basement. So it's, it's a little disturbing. You know, I mean, if you're sending somebody out, maybe check out where the homes are, or maybe they can check some of the wells near the homes. I mean, maybe it's a big ask, but.
Let me, let me start by asking the environmental engineers what their recommendations are based upon the concerns of the residents who live, you know, several hundred feet away. And what, whether they think that it's worth the investment or not.
Okay, and you can communicate that and you'll communicate that with us maybe.
As soon as I get that information back, yeah.
Okay. And the, the, I'm sorry, the engineer that you're going to rely on is?
The Township's engineer, BL Engineering, which is the company that's been helping us through the Act Two process. They're environmental engineers as opposed to civil engineers.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. Thanks for hearing me tonight. Fellow Springfield residents, hello. Commissioners.
Name and address?
Oh, sorry. John English, 603 Bradford Road. Commissioners, the, the line item for the plastic bag ordinance is kind of a troweling for a while now. I think this is the fourth or fifth time that it's come up. Is there some kind of delay in the decision on that?
Well, we voted on it last fall when it came up and it didn't pass, missed by one vote to actually advertise and vote on the order. So for an ordinance, it has to be publicly advertised. So there's a vote to advertise it, and then after 30 days, we can vote on it. So we didn't even pass it to advertise in the fall. So, and there were, were concerns and the Commissioners worked on the concerns. The Environmental Advisory Commission, it's, it's helping spearhead this, worked on more education and brought it back for our consideration this go around. So last month, we voted to advertise it in the past, and then tonight we're voting to enact it.
Okay. It's like, I guess the reason I'm here tonight is people are stressed, you know? I mean, it's the country's stress, the township, the residents are, it's a stressful time. We can't go to Giant without spending a hundred dollars just on essentials. We're going to clobber at the gas pumps. We have historic high inflation. We have restaurants and small businesses that are hanging on by a thread. We're paying for credit card, more for credit card transactions and watching just basic our retirement savings plummet. So, yeah, I mean, people are stressed about that. And I don't think right now is the time for the local government to come in with a great, another great idea. This was passed, I mean, it was introduced. It wasn't something that the residents came to you with and said, this is what we want. There was a survey done by the EAC, and I believe it was like 450 people who did this survey. That's 2% of the population of Springfield Township. Do you feel that that number is significant enough to move forward on a notion? Yes. 2% of the population is who did the survey. This is based on 2%.
Survey is one aspect to get some, some feedback from.
Well, what I'm saying is.
I don't think anyone's.
No one, this wasn't something the Springfield Township said, yes, we want this. This is something that the EAC wants. And they, they're quite clear about it. A lot of their documentation is saying, well, if this happens and maybe some senators are on board and maybe we can do this for the state. I'm just saying, don't you think there's enough out there right now that people are stressed out about where we really need to implement something like this? That's kind of arbitrary. I mean, I read through it.
Are you suggesting waiting for a less stressful time to do it?
I'm suggesting, yes, actually I am. I just don't think that this is a great time to do it. Just one more comment, if you don't mind. I'm not here to advocate for plastic bags. I'm not here, I'm not, I don't, I'm not here to advocate tonight for plastic bags. And I do not believe plastic bags are a constitutional right. We are all aware of the negative impact plastic in general has on our environment. Something else that we shall be aware of is the fact that anytime an ordinance or a law is enacted, regardless of, regardless of its intent, a piece of freedom is lost. An ordinance should only be enacted by fact. The kicker to this is the exemptions. I stood up here last time when I asked, you know, about, you know, elderly people having an exemption, just being that they're setting their ways and so forth. And it was really just an example to see really how far you're dug into this, to not make any exemptions. And I was kind of blown away that the township's exempt, federal, local government is exempt. Do you think that's any way to govern? Do as I say, not as I do? Are you okay with that? Is anybody up here not okay with that? No? Answer to this, anybody, if you raise your hand, I know I have to talk to the board. Single-use plastic bags, this statement itself is ridiculous. Because if there's anyone in this room who doesn't have a drawer full of plastic bags that are reused time after time for whether it be some small trash cans, big up dog waste, or whatever it might be.
I, I, I do think that you bring up good points and then, and they don't fall on deaf ears at all.
Okay.
And I, and I think that, that, and all of those points have been brought out and played out in the debates. And I think that they are all very valid. And I think at the end of the day, I mean, when the actual comes up, but I, but I do think that the pros in this situation probably outweigh the negatives, but they're not, it's certainly not a slam dunk or it's not, you know, there aren't issues that come along with it, whether it's regardless of the situation that we're all kind of going through right now or people's use of the single-use plastic bags. But I think at the end of the day, the reduction in the use of plastics and the reduction in the use of plastics and, you know, whatever percentage amount it, it just ends up being is a net positive. At least that's my.
Commissioner Cobb, I found a contradiction in the, in the ordinance. It said that the plastic bags were causing some kind of hiccups in the recycling stream. But then on another note, it said that the plastic bags aren't a part of the Springfield Township recycling program. Could you just explain that?
Plastic bags are not part of the program.
Yes, but that's what.
Because they clog up, they're, they're, they're so flimsy that the, they can't be sorted with, when, with the other plastics that we collect. So that's why they're banned from collection.
I see. And Commissioner, could you just tell me where, what hap, we burn our recyclables, correct? They get incinerated.
No, 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 no. We try and sell as many of our recyclables as possible.
We don't burn recycle, I was here the other, you were here, Jim? And the gentleman from the EAC said that we, we incinerate them, we burn them.
We burn our trash.
Did we not hear that?
Trash.
Oh, not, not plastic?
Well, sometimes there's plastic in the trash.
Okay, what do we do with our plastics? We sell it? Is this what you're saying?
If, if it's through one through seven, we collect and send it to a recycling center and it's up to them to find a market, if one exists, to, to package and resell the plastic.
Interesting. Okay, so that's a third different answer I got from the Commissioners. But I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Thomas, he Dan Road. With the single-use plastic bags, I understand the problem and I wish there was a better way to, to solve it. But I've had my single-use plastic bag as a trash bag in my car for months. Empty it out, hang it back in again, until the other day when somebody put a melted chocolate bar. So what am I going to use in my car to replace that plastic bag? That's going to be okay for melted candy, for a barf bag, if somebody gets sick in the car. What do you, and you don't have to answer this because somebody, I'd like to hear though. Dirty diapers, if you're out, what are you going to put them in? Hygiene products in, like the gentleman said, the little trash bag in the bathroom. Take an air kitty litter. And if you've got shoes where you've been hiking or wet bathing suits or something, what are you going to put it in? They're all multi-uses for this single-use bag. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Either public comment?
Chris Weth, 1207 St. Clair Road, Orland. My comments on the plastic bag and my questions are simply directed at analysis. What's, what's the analysis? What's the source information? Where's it come from? During tonight's discussion of that topic, will the Commissioners present their analysis of the source information or how they looked at source information underlying some of the statements? And how that arrived at their decisions? Or it's just, just a vote?
Well, I'll tell you, we've, we've gone over and discussed and debated this topic on many public meetings. Okay. Probably going on seven or eight actual Commissioner meetings in addition to the subcommittees that cover it. So we're not going to necessarily relitigate the rationale behind everything to this because it's been, it's been discussed. But I would direct you to the program guide that was published by our Environmental Advisory Commission. You can get there from the website, from their portion of the website. It's a pretty detailed document. It talks about the rationale. It cites studies. It talks about the programming that we're going to implement so that it's, it's, it's not too inconvenient to, to implement.
Okay, so it's in addition to the statement, it's a, so these statements in here are a summary of that program guide, for example, where it says the use of single plastic carrier bags have severe environmental impact. That statement is looked at in detail and drilled down into?
That, that is our belief.
Okay. Um, and where it says numerous studies have documented, those studies are listed as source information? I mean, I've heard this, that numerous studies have documented, but is the source information listed?
I believe there's links to a lot of the studies in that program.
Okay, thank you. Um, and studies have documented that placing prohibition, paragraph 10, that's also available there? And in that underlying. Well, the, so it says, studies have documented that placing a prohibition on the distribution of single plastic bags at the point of sale and placing a fee on other bags reduces the negative environmental impact. That source information is available? So that I can drill down into the details of that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, sorry?
It's online too.
It, it is online. Okay. And all the Commissioners have looked at to their satisfaction, the underlying information in arriving.
Different Commissioners have different opinions on it. So we're not, we're not a monolith. So.
Understand.
Everyone has their own vote.
Will that be brought up or just no, no real discussion, just a vote tonight?
No, no, no. The, every Commissioner will have an opportunity to, to speak before the resolution is passed.
Okay.
If they choose to.
And will, okay, and will that include their underlying rationale, how they arrived at their decision?
It's up to the individual Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to point out, because maybe I'm confused, but people keep saying, you know, I need these plastic bags to do this and this and this and this. You can still buy plastic bags. There's like 500 different kinds in the supermarket that you, you can buy in quantities as small as 10, I think. All this ordinance does is ban the use of those, what somebody called super flimsy.
Bad point of sale.
Point of sale, one-time bags that are, you know, used to, to take products out of an establishment. But if you want to buy plastic bags, you can, there's nothing in this ordinance that prohibits buying plastic bags.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, the sort of this does not ban the use of plastic bags, specifically point of sale that, that helps the overall issue. Certainly doesn't solve the plastic issue by any stretch of the imagination. We all know that. But this is something that is. But this is something that is in our control to, to make a dent for the common good. And Janie, you said, I mean, I use it for my kitty litter. I reuse them, you know, to the cows come home for other things. But I will guarantee you that the amount that don't get reused is a very high magnitude compared to the ones that actually do. Need a public comment?
Margaret Mary Burke of Orland. A question, do, um, do you have a, the draft connectivity trails and connectivity plan for the residents to view?
Yeah, I think we're making that available Friday.
Yep.
On the website, it'll be available on Friday.
There's, and the reason why I ask, currently, there are two separate, different draft reports on the websites, you know, different areas. So that's why I was following up in that regard.
Yeah, so this is a new document. To be clear, it's a draft. It's something that we're going to review and consider. We, we're going to ask the county to come and actually present and have some discussion about it. Uh, but even when it's adopted, it's still a guide. It's an aspirational guide. Because it really, it covers a huge amount of, you know, kind of, kind of activity, you know, sort of wishlist that we have, you know, that we know is not all feasible. You know, from the get-go, but it will be available Friday for review. There's nothing in it that's set in stone that says because it's on the plan, this is going to be here and this is going to go there. You know, it's, it's a guide to, for us to be able to prioritize where we can improve connectivities.
And the reason why I mentioned this, the residents of Orlandman Avenue are very concerned that the trail, one of the proposed draft trails is directly behind our homes.
That, I think that was an older one, because the, the draft that is going to be live on Friday actually thinks showed. And again, it, it, it's not binding by any way. But I think it showed on the other end of the property.
Yeah, yeah, it is currently on the website.
Okay, so that's, that's probably an older, older model. It didn't come out of this process, I don't think. Do we have a draft from early meetings, this go round? Because I know there's older versions of
They've had draft trail maps or on the, on the website for some time for comment. And the final plan has a number of them as well. Now, the trail you're talking about behind your home, was that just a, a closed-loop trail around the park? Proposed park, or is that one that connects to something?
It connects from the railroad to that path and goes around the back of our homes.
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry?
A path that doesn't exist on the railroad.
Correct. This is just on the plan. It's designated by a dotted red line and it goes right behind our homes.
And then goes where?
Do you have that up?
Well, I will tell you, the newest one, the one that's going to be available Friday, actually shows it on the Vicky on side.
Okay.
Some kind of connectivity to what we're implementing on the railroad and what, where, where else do we go? Trying to go up to Wallman Avenue.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a comment. I, I listened to the workshop meeting and because of the weather, unfortunately, I wasn't able to, to attend. And there was a lot of time that was dedicated to the green spaces of our township. And I just want to say, it's under our nose. Tank car is a perfect space for the township to develop as a green space and preserve nature and try and help control this adverse weather that we're all affected by. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other comment? We will get into the committee reports. I think I did this last month, so. All right, the first, uh, next item this evening is regarding fireworks display at the North Hills Country Club. I move that the Board of Commissioners waive section thirty-three oh three dot one, twelve of the Springfield Township Fire Prevention Code in order that the North Hills Country Club may conduct a professional fireworks display on Sunday evening, September third, twenty twenty-three, approximately eight fifteen P M. It's part of the club's annual Labor Day celebration. The approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the pyrotechnical firm and North Hills Country Club shall add Springfield Township as additional insured under certificates of insurance for the event. And two, the pyrotechnical firm and the North Hills Country Club shall work closely with the Springfield Township Fire Marshal and Orland Fire Company to help prevent an accident and to create a point of action in the event that an accident does occur during the activity. That is my motion. Is there a second?
I have a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions from Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, is there a rain date?
Rain date is the following day.
Following day.
Which should be Monday?
Monday.
How long, how long do the, does it typically last? So start today fifteen. How long do they expect to be doing that?
I mean, based on the cost of the fireworks, I think it, if it lasts fifteen to twenty minutes, that's a long time.
They broke.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. Uh, that concludes my report. We will move to the uh, chairman of the Environmental Resource Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to announce that during the month of July twenty twenty-three, Springfield Township residents recycled a hundred and fifty-six point one tons of materials with a householder participation rate of seventy-one point six. The net cost for the month was twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents. Uh, the board would also like to remind our residents that electronic waste is not suitable for collection by the township. In twenty-ten, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed the Covered Device Recycling Act prohibiting the disposal disposal of electronic waste in landfills and waste-to-steam plants. A lot of electronic waste, including computers, televisions, monitors, keyboards, printers, and small devices. Including all those items. Small household electronics and kitchen appliances are also unavailable to be collected. Please reference the township website for appropriate disposal facilities for the, these items that were listed and other household items. That is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Don't you have another item?
You have that.
Going to move on to the, okay. Uh, this is ordinance nine seventy-five, single-use plastic bags. I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance nine seventy-five to regulate the distribution of single-use plastic carryout bags. The proposed ordinance amends the code of, code of the township of Springfield by adding a new chapter eighty-five to regulate the use of single-use plastic carryout bags by, by adding finding, defining requirements, enforcement provisions, penalties, and, and exemptions relating to the distribution and use of single-use plastic carryout bags. The ordinance shall become effective six months after enactment and includes a mandatory fee of ten cents per bag, this is per paper bag, uh, that is to be charged by merchants that choose to supply the paper bags to their customers. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. Uh, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I want to sincerely thank Springfield's EAC uh, that under the leadership of Chairman Aaron Stempelwitz and with special mention to, to member, members Richard Metz and Steve Havran and others uh, for the, for the immense amount of work that they put in uh, to, for this ordinance to be, to be considered and hopefully to be approved tonight. Uh, I would also like to mention that, uh, the contribution that our, that our previous assistant township manager Brendan Ford made to this, this process. So it is my intention, I think it's a good ordinance, I think it covers, it covers the high points and it takes into consideration, uh, all members of the community with regard to affordability uh, and, and other issues. So it's my intention to vote in favor of this ordinance.
I concur. Um, I intend to, to vote for it as well. Peter, you know, we've talked about it at great length. Penn Environment has been a good resource and has helped systematize the, a lot of the ordinances are in Pennsylvania, so it's very similar. It's not identical, but it's very similar to ordinance that have been passed by our neighboring communities so that there's not too much. Uh, you know, every, every town has a different ordinance, different rules. It gets to be confusing. It really should be done at the state level. I think there's, I forget the exact number, but it's in the teens in terms of how many states have statewide bans of some sort. You could throw Puerto Rico and Guam in there too. Um, unfortunately, we're probably a long way from doing it at state level in Pennsylvania, so the municipalities are, are forced to act. But it by no means is perfect. It by no means solves the plastic uh, issue, but it's something that we can control and it's something that on the scale of the benefit and the inconvenience of it, um, I think it's a good thing. So I intend to support it as well.
I would just say with courtesy to those who are inquiring for our reasoning and also for those who may not be fully in support of the ban, you've heard me say it before, my only concern, of course, is the fee for a variety of reasons, but I will still support the ban itself because I do agree that unbalance, the benefit outweighs the challenges. And while I don't generally support, uh, the fee element, um, I know I'm on, out on that and I do generally support the, uh, the ban of the single, uh, use plastics at the point of sale. Uh, if we can help it, I think it's a small contribution and echoing Commissioner Lee's sentiments that it should be done at a greater level. More widespread in a variety of directions, not even just by government, but those who originally brought this to our, uh, attention. Even when they started distributing this and those larger, uh, organizations should, should be moving faster than even we so, so, so that we wouldn't have to intervene. Um, nonetheless, unbalance, I think it's a positive.
And I'll, I'll just add briefly that I think that as everyone else should have echoed, it certainly is not, um, a, a perfect ordinance. And I think that there will be certainly growing pains that will come along with it, but I think we'll work through those. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, we, as we talked on Monday, we talked previously, um, you know, we're committed to facilitate and make, um, access to reusable bags, uh, an accurate proposition for, for all township residents. So whether it's having a bag, uh, drop location or, you know, kind of facilitate people that, you know, everyone's going to get access to reusable bags. And I think that, that's an important piece. And I know even in the course of my, my day travels, I found myself out in Rander Township. You know, in the course of three stops, um, one of which was a Wawa, one of which was a, a sandwich stop. I ended up with three usable bags in that short amount of time. And, and we'll certainly have those moments here. Um, and, you know, but I think one or two of those moments, and I'm going to be remembering to bring in that reusable bag to Wawa. Um, you know, where I haven't done that in the past. You know, I do it pretty routinely with, with Giant or Whole Foods or Acme now. Um, but reprogramming my own behavior, um, you know, just remember to always bring in that bag. I think it'll just take some time and it'll take some growing pains. But I, I, I do want to acknowledge, um, that, um, you know, a lot of the, uh, opposing views were heard. And they did not fall on deaf ears. And a lot of the sentiments, I, I certainly share. I mean, you know, we have uh, use for those single-use plastic bags a lot in our home. And one of the things that I weighed and sort of continued to weigh is to, that I don't view the alternatives to single-use plastic as being you know, a, a, a net positive. I mean, certainly, this is going to increase the use of pure bags. Um, they, they, they will be the primary option outside of reusable, outside of reusable bags that people bring into, say, the grocery store. Um, and there's a cost to that. There's a cost to that production. There's a cost to their, uh, existence. Um, and there's a, certainly a cost to the development of those reusable bags. Um, so when Wawa has to order, you know, tons of those bags, I mean, there's a real cost to their manufacturing and then, you know, depending upon how much they're used, um, you know. But as everyone has echoed, I think at the end of the day, there is a net positive to this. And as a township, we have committed ourselves um, to the promotion of uh, lowering our impact on the environment, whether it is, um, in areas that we have been really at the vanguard of, uh, local municipalities in the state in terms of our energy audits and our adoption of um, you know, electrical vehicles in our fleets. I mean, really, really have been in the forefront of a lot of municipalities. This one, you know, I think we really are kind of following what a lot of municipalities have already put in place. Um, and as Commissioner Lee, uh, suggested, I mean, really, a lot of the townships around us have already adopted this. And we're just kind of following their place to make it more uniform in the area. Um, but at the end of the day, it is a net positive. It's not going to be perfect. We'll work through that. Um, and so that's why, you know, I will be voting in support of it, but, um, I do want to just make it clear that, you know, a lot of the opposition that, that is not, doesn't fall on deaf ears. Um, so.
And just to follow up on that, a, a shout out to, uh, community member Steve Havran for reaching out and listening to the opposition and working on that guide that you've heard us reference a few times to help alleviate those concerns and just be considerate of everyone else's experiences, or, or I would say everyone else's, a totality of experiences by, by individuals in the township. And really appreciated working through that, which is why it took us this long and why we may be now falling in um, aligned with our fellow townships as opposed to, um, being the vanguard, as Commissioner Cobb, you know, said. So appreciate that hard work. And again, to echo his sentiments, your concerns are not unheard.
Someone says Steve Heavens name a third time. He appears in your mirror.
Steve.
Or maybe like Any other questions or comments? Okay, we had a motion, we had a second, we had lots of comments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Please record a five-one vote. Peter, does that conclude your report now?
That does conclude my report. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, we will move to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item this evening is the Black Horse Inn. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Township Manager to execute an extension to the existing listing agent, listing agreement with Dan Helwig Incorporated to market and secure tenants for two office suites at the Black Horse Inn fourteen thirty-two Bethlehem Pike Flower Town. Pursuant to the terms of the agreement, Dan Helwig Realtor shall serve as the Township's broker and agent and shall receive compensation during the term of the agreement in the amount equal to one month's rental per unit and shall be shared with any cooperating broker pursuant to the terms of the agreement. The agreement shall expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. That is my motion.
Good motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by
Quick, uh, question. Did, um, Mr. Helwig suggest any other incentivization that we might consider? It's just the market is what it is, I assume.
I, I talked to, uh, Mr. Helwig this morning. He, I, I think Michael also talked to him. Um, he, uh, allayed my concerns about, you know, the shared fees with the cooperating brokers. He thinks that the, the current structure is, uh, is, uh, adequate to, to attract interest. The, the problem is that there's not too much interest yet, so. And he did, he did send the township, and I see Mike has put it in our book, you know, competing locations, which, uh, there are plenty of in the township. And, uh, you know, he thinks it's going to turn around. It just may take a little longer than everybody hopes.
Should we offer a tenant a canned ham, if they said at least?
That would help, sure. Free, free coffee.
Ooh, yeah. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six-zero vote.
Next is Resolution number sixteen seventeen four fifteen zero two Paper Mill Route. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number one six one seven, a resolution authorizing the condemnation of land and improvements located at fifteen zero two Paper Mill Route when more for public purposes, which shall include but are not limited to the use and improvement to land for public buildings, public parks, libraries, parks, recreation places, municipal purposes. recreation places, municipal purposes and all other purposes authorized by the first class township code. The acquisition of the property through condemnation at consideration or compensation shall not exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is my motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Then Mike give us, then Mike, for the benefit of those at home, give us a just a brief synopsis of what happened here and how quickly this property came on the market and how.
Sure, sure, last week I was contacted by the listing agent for the property, which is located immediately next door to the township's Police Administration Building. The property is in an estate at the moment because the owner recently deceased. The Realtor said that he would be putting the property on the market very shortly, it was offered in a preview, but that there was a very quick opportunity for the township to purchase the property if we acted quickly at a below market value. So I solicited the interest of the board, received five, actually, at the end of the day, affirmative votes, didn't speak with two others to order an appraisal, we ordered the appraisal such that it was available for the board to consider the acquisition. And at at this point, the board is poised to make an offer for the property for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you heard earlier. There's there's no intended use at the moment for the property, but it's adjacent to the municipal building and you don't get an opportunity to get land immediately adjacent to the campus all that often.
Any other questions or comments? Right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote.
Last slide of my habits for the Shatree Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Jerry Schwartz Erdenheim to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Shatree Commission. Mr. Schwartz's term of service shall expire July thirteenth, two thousand twenty six. Mr. Schwartz presently serves as an associate member of the Shatree Commission, that is my motion.
Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell, we'll go to the chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the the July check reconciliation in the amount of one million two hundred and fifty two thousand eight hundred and twenty two dollars and ninety cents in the August bill listing in the amount of one million seven hundred and fifty six thousand nine hundred and forty two dollars and thirty four cents. That's my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote.
Great, and then I have an announcement regarding the zoning hearing board. The next, this month's Springfield Township zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, August twenty eighth at seven P M in this Springfield Township building, where they will hear a single application from the application of Michael De Laurentis, owner of the property located at Two Terminal Avenue in Erdenheim. That applicant is requesting a variance, seeking approval to install a six foot high solid fence along the property line adjoining Terminal Avenue. Six foot high fencing is required to be set back fifteen feet from any property line abutting a public right of way. That property is owned within the B Residential District of Ward Four of Springfield Township. Copy that application and information submitted for this application is on file in the Community Development Office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Again, that application will be heard on Monday, August twenty eighth at at seven P M in this room. And that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb, we will go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzavah.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have here an announcement, the Board of Commissioners is pleased to announce that a draft version of the Springfield Township Trails and Connectivity Plan will be made available for review on the township website beginning Friday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty three. The plan is intended to serve as an aspirational guide to connect neighborhoods, parks, schools and other places of interest within the township to increase connectivity and recreational opportunities for township residents. Arrangements have been made for the Montgomery County Planning Commission to present the plan to the community at the October eleventh, two thousand twenty three meeting of the Board of Commissioners. In the meantime, all residents are encouraged to view and become acquainted with the plan on the website. I also encourage all of you to go ahead and try out some of those connective points and and give us those finer points, appreciate the resident who came here earlier, who obviously took the time to participate in the trail planning process and and a shout out to the entire Trail Committee who really worked diligently and and did a really great job soliciting feedback from the community on this plan. And that is concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Retzavah, we'll go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, I have no real items to report on, I did attend the July twenty fifth meeting of the Library Advisory Council that was hosted by Mary Catherine McGarvey, and she was able to really give me give me up the speed on everything that they're doing there, which is pretty remarkable, the amount of programs that they're putting together and and different efforts that they're doing to to stay current and make that a really quite a part of our community, so it was really encouraging, you know, we really have a jewel there that everybody should take advantage of.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Okay, our committee, the agenda items have been completed, so the board is now open again to receiving public comment.
One thing I just wanted to follow up on on Commissioner Cobb's report on the zoning board, that one item on in front of the zoning board, the last action of the Board of Super Board of Commissioners on that item was to authorize opposition from my office. As you all know, Mr. and Mrs. De Laurentis appeared at our Monday meeting this week and explained why they wanted variances and they were going to go, I guess, back to the drawing board and see what they could do about the particular design of the application and fence. I have not as yet been contacted about whether the hearing Mr. Cobb mentioned is to be continued, so at the moment, if we don't hear from the De Laurentises, I still have the assignment to appear in front of the zoning or hearing board on that application. And I oppose it and I will attempt to put forth some of the ideas that came forth from from the commissioners on Monday.
Right, and then we can review that next month and if we decide we can remove that opposition, if it's to our satisfaction.
If they ask for continues, if you remember, this is already continued
Right.
to this, to the August twenty eighth meeting, we suggested that they consider continuing it another month. My point is only that they I have not heard, not yet heard from them.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Stephen Heaven, twelve thirteen Bergen Road, I just want to say thank you all for your support tonight and voting on the ordinance and we've got a lot more to work to do, but thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Stephen.
I'm back. The ten cent for the paper bags, I understand Wawa doesn't do paper bags, but like Giant? That better, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay. Giant has the paper bags, so I I I kind of don't like the the ten cent charge for the paper bags. I've had tote bags, I play devil's advocate a lot, which I think you know. I've got my own tote bags that I've been using for grocery shopping and it's thirty one bags, if anybody is interested. They're great, they got all kinds of things. But Jim, I'll talk to you afterwards, because the only other plastic bags I know they sell are like the trash bags and use a thirteen gallon bag for one, it's a little much, so.
Thank you. All right, no other public comment, I will accept a motion.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say real, real quick, real briefly. We had a fantastic night out event that our police department put on, celebrating National Night Out, which brought the community together, the police department together all at the campus, it was, what, two weeks ago, Mike? Last week.
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. But it really was a fantastic evening, tons of families came out. And I do want to give recognition to Sergeant Whitney's squad with Corporal Calhoun and and the detectives on that, Detective Boone, Fantry, really, everybody, and there were a lot, a lot of people involved. I know Ian at Public Works, Ian Hammer, Pat DePaul. Again, it was just one really great township event for just a fantastic evening that I do just want to give some some praise.
We did have some complaints about the person running the ice cream machine.
Yeah.
That there was
Couldn't keep up.
That there was some inconsistency on their on the operation and there was a long line to get ice cream.
It was working as quickly as I could.
Yeah, between the ice cream and and the the balloon. The balloon guy who was really worked up until the end. Yeah.
And Craig was helping Manning the boom.
Yeah.
He was with the, getting people ushered onto there.
But I think that's that's the third sort of this in this modern iteration, the third National Night Out event we've had, and I think it was the best one ever, and it really does prove to be just a great community that, so. I do want to thank all the efforts that everybody involved put on to to put that together.
I would second it.
Good second, any questions or comments?
Agreed.
All right, at this time, I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting. If a motion, is there a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Thank you for being with us, please record a six zero vote, thank you, everyone. Adjourn.